This is the regular school board meeting of ISD 709 Duluth Public Schools. It is Tuesday, June 20th, and it is about 6:45. And again, we are the regular school board meeting of ISD 709. We hold one regular school board meeting a month, and we invite our public to come and, you know, share the information and listen and be a part of our meeting. First of all, I turn it over to Member Lockler Kemp to take role.
Okay, Member Derek Dieter?
Present.
Member Kirby? I am here. Member Lofol?
Here.
Member Oswald?
Here.
Then Member Sadaski is excused, and Member Sandholm?
Present.
We have a quorum. And then Assistant Superintendent Magus?
Here.
Assistant Superintendent Bonds?
Present.
CFO Simone?
Present.
And HR Director Teresa Devens?
Present.
Okay, and our next on our agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. So rise if you're able for our pledge. And the pledge is up here in the corner. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. And again, you can tell too, we're a very formal school board. We follow parliamentary procedure, and we have agendas that we stay to. And so we're excited to share our meeting with you tonight. On our agenda tonight is the approval of our agenda. So I'm looking for a motion to approve the agenda that we've all had in our packet since last Friday. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So move.
Member Dieter approves. Is there a second? Dr. Kirby seconds our agenda. All those in favor of the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Are you opposed? The agenda is set. So moving on to our number five on our agenda is school and community recognition. And so I always turn it over to Assistant Superintendent Bonds as he shares the celebrations of community and our staff or students. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Lofol, and good evening, everyone. And I really love it when we celebrate students. So, members of board, this month I would like to recognize 20 amazing students. First, I would like to ask Maddie Watts to come to the table. Maddie Watts, who recently graduated from Denville High School this month, was on the speech team at Denville this year. She advanced to the Minnesota State High School League State Speech Tournament in April after taking first place in the seven AA state championship. Where she performed a monologue for her 2016 movie Jackie, which is about the life of Jackie Kennedy after the assassination of her husband John F. Kennedy. After six grueling rounds at stake, Maddie took third place out of 45 competitors, advancing to the National Speech and Debate Tournament in Phoenix, Arizona, which took place over this weekend. Congratulations, Maddie, for all of your accomplishments. We wish you well in your next adventure. Congratulations. And I know Maddie wants to share a little bit about, you know, your performance.
Hello, okay. Yeah, speech has been a really wonderful experience for me. I've been on the team for three years now, starting when I was a sophomore. And I think every year up until this has really built into my piece this year, just kind of collecting bits along the way to learn and grow and finally get to the point where I felt like I could compete kind of at that level. It's helped me a lot personally, but also it in itself is a wonderful experience, and I've met some really wonderful people. And I'm very, I'm very lucky. Thank you.
I just want to say, congratulations to you. I think that you really truly represent the district at its best when we think about everything that we have in the district, whether they're great athletes or people competing in various things. To have somebody compete at an intellectual level and be one of the top people in the country representing Duluth Public Schools, that makes me really, really proud and it fills my heart. So I just want to say thank you for making Duluth proud and thanks for doing such a great job. And I also know that your coach has very, very warm thoughts about you as well.
This is kind of the awkward thing when you're on the school board, but I spent my whole career as a teacher as well. But I, and I want to recognize, first I want to recognize Kiki and Jim Watts, who are her parents, who, again, to be a part of the competitive speech team means that parents need to get up at like an ungodly four in the morning to get their child to the bus. And I know I have some other speech parents with me today, and so that's exciting. And then I want to recognize Brian Schilling, who's here tonight too. He is a coach with me on the Duluth Speech Team. Brian and I coached not only the speech program together, but also the debate program. And so this past week, Maddie competed in Phoenix, Arizona for a week with 268 other successful drama performers from across the country, actually across the world, because we have contestants that compete in other countries that also then come to this national tournament. Denville has been a member of the National Speech and Debate Association since 1942. Now, I haven't coached all of those years since that date, but I have been a part of the program since 1984. And so it's been an incredible opportunity for Maddie to be a part of the program. So she competed in Phoenix. She spoke six rounds and placed 61st out of 268 from across the nation. And so it's just an incredible stamina and just an incredible opportunity to see all of those incredible performers. So again, we want to celebrate Maddie's advancement to the state speech tournament, the Minnesota State High School League. And her success there was placing 10th, placing third in the qualifier, and then placing at nationals. So she leaves us sadly as a senior, but we're proud of her and celebrate the program that Duluth offers for speech and debate. Any other comments? I think we take your picture and, you know, we want to just really celebrate.
Thank you.
Yeah. We're glad you were able to come.
I think you should get a picture.
I should, yeah.
You should, you should get a picture.
Yeah, it was, it's been a great, so should Brian. Thank you. Hey Maddie, you just do a little walk of fame here and they'll shake your hand. Because you never know, she could be on Broadway one of these days. And we have more celebrations.
Yes, we do. Now I would like to invite the History Day students up to the table.
Another incredible opportunity for speaking.
Do I just stand right there and thereabouts yet? Members of the board and members of the public, tonight I would like to also recognize 19 students from East High School and Fort Bend East Middle School, all of which placed at the state History Day Tournament with eight students advancing to nationals. Of those who competed at nationals, I would like to specifically acknowledge Ola Okarone for taking second place in the nation in the Senior Individual Performance for her project titled "Madam CJ Walker: Raving Frontiers in African-American Hair Business and Intelligence." I would also like to acknowledge Garen Hackbarth and Samuel Phillips, who took fourth place in the nation for Senior Group Exhibit, and they received Outstanding Affiliate Entry and the Senior Division Award for their project titled "FDR's Fireside Chats: A Frontier in Presidential Communication." Congratulations to all of our students and thank you for representing your school and the district at the national level. Congratulations, students. And I do want to start here. How about your name and the category you were in?
My name is Margaret Johnson, and I competed in the Senior Individual Website category. Oh, and my project was titled "The First Earth Day: A Frontier in Environmental Activism."
I'm Clara Tella. I competed in the Senior Division Paper, and I, my project was on microfinance as a frontier in private aviation.
My name is Val Medva. I competed in a group exhibit with my brother Mirametis, and our project was titled "Nucleus Elements: A Frontier in Human Thought."
I'm Tavon, I'm Tavon Robb. I competed in the Senior Individual Website category, and my project was titled "Leak, Spice, and Litigation: A Frontier in Media and Law: The Pentagon Papers."
My name's Sarah Eftingold. I did a Senior Group Exhibit. My project was "Expanding the Frontier of Climate Action: James Hansen's Testimony to Congress."
Hi, I'm Marjorie Stender, and I go by Cece. And we competed in a group dual performance.
Yeah, I'm in a very, and we did, our title was "Frontiers in Women's Combat Aviation: The Night Witches."
I'm Sam Phillips, and that is Garen Hackbarth. And our project is "FDR's Fireside Chats: A Frontier in Presidential Communication."
Congratulations, everyone.
And we also want your picture, so. And then you can do a little walk of fame as soon as the picture's done. And Catherine, yes.
So 17,000 students started projects in the state of Minnesota, and a number of them will kind of fall to the wayside. It's a lot of, it's a lot of work, and I think that's been a rapid kind of dance within the experience here. So I just really applaud their efforts to go all the way through to regions and then to state. So 17,000 startups, there were 800 entries at the state level. They really had a 1% chance of going on to nationals when you look at some of those stats. And then to have finish, all of the students here were either honorable mention. And they really brought home a lot of personal accolades, but I think being a part of this is something bigger than themselves. There are students who have gone on to be published. There are connections that they make through interviews and personal connections and stories that they often have. So I really love the personal piece and the representing community and never knowing where the journey's going to go with, with History Day. So super, super proud of them. And their main support, the regional support that we have, is absolutely amazing. And Ms. Nio is retiring this year, which makes me really sad. But she hopefully will maybe hopefully. With students and volunteers, so we just have kind of just extra special something. I won't even call it again, you're just going to call it a thank you for all of your work. She was recognized for Rotary Award and just some of the things that students wrote about her over the years doing this was also very sweet. So Ms. Nio, we thank you, and the program thanks you, and I thank the district, thank you for helping to support a portion of them. And I have some, I do want to meet with you to talk about some more ideas. I hope this large is here, but I got some ideas. Thank you all very much for your efforts and energy about this.
I will call them next year for the first time ever. All four secondary schools in Duluth will have History Day. So Denville, we started off, we're in. So I want to go through they and show them, tell them the interview. These people got interviewed, people who were alive and listened to "FDR's Fireside Chats." They found those. Night Witches will tough and rush up those hard times. You didn't interview?
I interviewed three people who were a part of the Air Force, a two-star general, and the commander wing at the Milwaukee Air Force Wing.
Women in aviation.
Yeah.
The project was on James Hansen, who you interviewed?
James Hansen.
The guy that, do you remember that war's movie, "In Community Troop"? He based that on the data from James Hansen. They got an interview with him.
I interviewed a former state permanent official along with a professor at the MZ.
We interviewed a math professor. For you to be honest.
There was a lot of people, there was a lot of people within the community that are part of the microfinance industry in Minnesota itself. And then there was a lot of people that had the experience internationally as well.
I interviewed Dennis Hayes, who was the main founder of the First Earth Day in 1970, and also some people who had been at the First Earth Day. And Dona Handasitav, who's like a stormwater and climate use educator.
And Ola, who's not here, we got a second interview. Madam CJ Walker's great-granddaughter.
Wow.
So this isn't like, oh, we're going to do some internet searching and just see what we come up with. This is going to the toss, so.
So if you could all gather over here, and coach, I'll just supervise. Brian, you got to get in pictures.
Smile.
Thank you. Yeah, that's important. Thank you. And Assistant Superintendent Bonds, does that conclude our school and community recognition?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Thanks to the team of administrators and, and for others that suggest people we can celebrate. Sometimes they're students, a lot of times they're students. We want to lift up our students and recognize them. But we also recognize, you know, community members that might be partnering with us, and we also recognize our staff as well. So I just want to thank our team of people who put that celebration together. And so looking at our next item on our agenda is item number six. It is our public comment. And so I'm going to ask Executive Secretary Paquette to, you know, bring up the, the list. And you know, while we were getting ready to start our, our, our school board meeting tonight, I forgot that we always read our commitment to equity and our commitment to good school board meetings. And so, Member Sandholm, now is the time that I would love to have you read our civility quote.
Thank you, Chair Lofol. Community vision and priorities for Duluth's schools. We will build on our shared beliefs and values of unity, high achievement, and responsible use of resources to create Duluth Public Schools and classrooms that are safe, supportive, and inclusive. We will work to inspire every student to achieve their potential and prepare students to lead productive, fulfilling lives as citizens of Duluth and the wider world. Eleven tools of civility. The school board recognizes 11 tools of civility that will provide increased opportunities for civil discourse in order to find positive resolutions to the issues that face our community. These tools include pay attention, listen, be inclusive, don't gossip, show respect, be agreeable, apologize, give constructive criticism, take responsibility, be honest and care for others, show your evidence, and share your reason.
Thank you. And then Member Lockler Kemp will again share with us the guidelines on public comment.
Hey, again, thank you for those of you who have signed up so far. We will ask at the end as well if any additional people would like to speak. But persons wishing to address the board will sign up before the board meeting listing their name and the manner on which they will speak. If you have handouts for the board, please give them to the school board secretary. Persons wishing to address the board will speak in the order in which they signed up. Persons addressing the board will have three minutes total. When speaking, use of names or any information that identifies a specific individual is legally prohibited, and you will be asked to end your comments. Persons addressing the board may not merge their time in order to allow one person to speak more than three minutes. The clerk of the board will start the stoplight timer at the start of each person's time. Green means go, yellow means wrap up, and red means stop. The board chair will give you a single gavel tap when there are 10 seconds of speaking time remaining. When the red leg comes on, the chair will gavel to signal you to end. Persons addressing the board shall confine their comments to matters pertaining to the agenda or other matters related to administrative concern. In the interest of respect for every public comment speaker, please hold any commentary during the speaker's time until they are finished.
Thank you. Our first speaker is Brian Schilling. On deck is Colleen? Canelo, say it again.
Canelo.
Canelo, Canelo?
Canelo.
Canelo, okay. If you could use the mic too, great. More for our viewers than, and our taping than anything else.
Good evening.
Yep.
All right, good evening, members of the board. I'm Brian Schilling. I've been a library media specialist at Piedmont, and so this past year, I'm coming to the board tonight in support of full-time library media specialists in our school buildings. Especially a return of library media specialist to our secondary buildings. We've been without full-time media specialists since the start of the 2019-20 school year. After decades of neglect and decline in Minnesota, the state legislature made a really important investment and redefinition of school media centers. They recognize the importance of having a certified library media specialist operating those media centers. During the pandemic, the public realized the importance of libraries in our community. School library media specialists checked out books to our students through the remote checkout. We provided technology assistance to families with Chromebooks and provided educational content on our district websites for families and teachers. Our district has received school library aid and an increase in investment from the legislature that is intended to support our school library media centers. And we ask that that money goes to making positions full-time first and foremost. Our group has been pleased to hear of positive discussions through our labor management body. We're also thrilled to hear on discussions of full-time secondary media specialists at the committee of the whole back on May 30th. We strongly encourage Duluth schools to utilize this investment in our kids so that they fall in love with the pleasure of reading, that they have strong research skills, and increase their academic connections in their school. Research has shown that schools with full-time library media specialists have higher test scores, have higher graduation rates, higher college readiness, and higher student engagement than schools without them. Minnesota has a database called E-Library Minnesota that provides students with test prep, high-quality databases with journals, articles, and books. And school library media specialists are licensed and trained to use these databases to work with students on information literacy, where you're trained to create research pathfinders, engaging tech tools, and interactive content for students to excel. Imagine a veteran social studies teacher who's a master of their content and a school library media specialist who's a master of research, accessing information and tech tools. This is a game changer with endless possibilities. Please invest in our library media services with full-time media specialists so there's equitable access to all students through all of the district. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Colleen Canelo, and on deck is Kevin Anderson.
Good evening, school board members. I am Colleen Canelo. I am a media specialist in the Duluth Public Schools. I'll be going into my seventh year as media specialist. Library media specialists empower students to be lifelong readers, informed researchers, critical thinkers, and responsible digital citizens. Schools that have high-quality library programs staffed by full-time library media specialists have been proven to increase student achievement and test scores across all content areas. Three years ago, the Duluth Public Schools reduced secondary media specialist positions from four full-time positions that each served one library to two, serving both a middle and high school library. I see these cuts not as a staffing issue, but as an equity issue. School libraries provide students with access to books, technology, and databases that they may not otherwise have at home. Studies have long shown that strong school library programs provide the greatest impact for vulnerable students from low socioeconomic backgrounds. Only 75, or excuse me, 57% of Duluth students are proficient in meeting reading standards. A literacy study by Dr. Stephen Crashen showed that school libraries are the only factor that matters when it comes to closing the gap that exists in literacy levels for students in poverty. The Duluth Public School District and, District and Individual School Goals are centered on improving literacy scores. Previous decisions to reduce student access to reading and research materials along with study spaces do not align with these goals. Over the last three years, students and staff have made it clear that the secondary media staffing levels are insufficient. While I worked at Lincoln Park in Denville, I received frequent student and staff complaints regarding the need for timely access to textbooks, materials for pleasure reading and research, information literacy instruction, and a quiet place to study. A number of high school students shared that their media center is a safe space, and on three days a week, they are left with nowhere to go as the library is either closed or remains unstaffed. In the elementary schools, there are some positive changes being made to the amount of student contact time. Next fall, all elementary media specialists will be moving to 45-minute class periods. In library media, this will allow additional opportunities for book checkouts and increased library and technology instruction time. I am hopeful that this momentum will be carried over into the secondary schools. At the state level, it was very encouraged to see the Minnesota Legislature recognize the critical role that media specialists play in improving student literacy through dedicated funding for school libraries. In the newly adopted strategic roadmap, the Duluth Public Schools has also committed to focusing on literacy across all content areas. Media specialists are in the unique position of being able to impact every student in every school. All Duluth students deserve consistent access to fully funded media centers staffed with full-time qualified library media specialists. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our last speaker, and last of someone in the audience that will come forward, is Kevin Anderson.
Good evening, my name is Kevin Anderson. Let's go, hold a sec. Recently, Father's Day, I was talking to one of my family members. I'm not supposed to say names, so I won't say who it was. But we were discussing about how my family, between myself, my wife, my parents, my in-laws, have just a little over 200 years of educating children here in the Duluth Public Schools. So to say that I'm invested in the Duluth Public Schools might be a bit of a understatement, given my family history and everything. We are definitely an important part of learning to, not only to read, but to love to read. Media specialists, excuse me, I'm a media specialist here in the Duluth Public Schools. And that is something that I think sometimes gets overlooked. Learning to read certainly is an important part and something that we do as well. But a really important part that a qualified media specialist will do is teach kids to love to read, not just the, you know, the physical act of reading itself, but enjoy, you know, things they like to read and that kind of thing. That is very difficult to do in our current state. At, here at Easton Denville, they only have library here two days a week. You know, like my colleagues here said that it is not conducive to both reading and learning to read. We also manage textbooks here in our district at middle school and high school level. Most schools have media specialists there three days a week. So it's a little bit better situation, but that gets in the way of all the kids learning as well. It takes several weeks when you're only there two days a week to get all the classes to go down and check out their math book and check out their science book and check out everything. And that's lost educational time. You know, the teachers can't really go forward if they don't have their textbooks ready to go for them. And it's not a situation that we like or enjoy or want to see, but when you're there two days a week, that's unfortunately what it is. I recently accepted the position at Denville in Lincoln Park Middle School for next year, knowing that I certainly have my work cut out for me. You're only there two or three days a week here. Instead of running a program of educating kids, you end up basically running around like air is on fire just trying to get everyone everything they need in the two or three days a week they're there instead of, I don't know, five days a week would obviously be much better. So we're hoping that we can come out and provide some influence in, you know, in the way that that school, our student state provided funding gets appropriated for our district, so. Thank you.
Are there any other people in our audience that would like to come and share a comment or an idea? Seeing none, we thank our community for coming forward and sharing ideas and concerns. And oftentimes in our school board, the superintendent, now that I want to put him on the spot, sometimes he'll make some relationship to topics that will come up tonight, but he also will take time to answer emails concerning the topics that we shared tonight. So thank you again for coming out tonight. Next on our agenda, school board members, is number eight. Speaking of, oh, it's number seven, really. It is reading communications petitions. These would be things mailed that would come to members of the board through the mail that only comes to me, and we have none. So we'll move on then to number eight, report of the superintendent. Underneath these are reports from our school, our student school board reps, and they're not with us this summer. But I have reached out to them, but now their passwords, I think, are not working, so I don't think emails will get to ours. So I do want to find other ways to reach out to our student school board reps. I think they would like to come in and maybe be a part of some of our meetings this summer. And then it's the superintendent's report, and then I'll review just the scheduled meetings. Did you need a quick break to talk? If you wanted to grab?
Maybe a ten-second break because I have to go to the restroom.
Oh, okay.
I won't, I won't, I'll just take it.
Is there anyone else that we can get in? Yeah, come on, this board book. I haven't got it. May I go to the email?
No one's working for me.
It's working for you?
Yep.
New board book or old board book?
I don't know.
Board book premiere.
Let me see what comes up.
Can we pause the recording? Why don't we just pause for a minute? Now you're gonna, that's right.
Thank you. So with our superintendent's report, we talked about mission and vision of the district. These are our new mission and vision statements. One is with our mission, every student, every day will be empowered with learning opportunities for growth, creativity, and curiosity in reparations to the future and in global community. And our vision for where we're going is that Duluth Public Schools will be, will provide an academically engaging, safe, and inclusive environment with high expectations and responsible use of resources.
Good job.
So when I think about responsible use of resources, we did do that.
We did.
Great work by our group. It sounds wonderful. But when I think about responsible use of resources, sometimes when we have new legislation that approves funding for certain things, we think about where can we best apply it. So thinking about things like additional funding for library media, tying into my recent decision, we are looking at increasing our library media specialists back to full-time in secondary. We only have $140,000 worth of new funding, which actually, when you look at benefits and everything, two media specialists could be about $200,000. But we believe that it is very important to have students have access to text-rich environments if we're going to prepare them for the future in global communities. So that's something we're looking at moving forward with and aligns deeply with the mission and vision that you've set out for the district. It's also responsible use of resources because, you know, we didn't have that additional funding, and that's part of the reason why the decision to reduce those positions was made prior to me being here, but because there was a need for budget reductions. But now that we have some additional funding, it's good to be applying. When I look at our topics for tonight, I have a few community updates. I have some updates related to our strategic roadmap work. And then CFO Simone Zunich will be sharing a budget update. We realized that the HR finance reported didn't come through as planned, and so we weren't able to post that. So we have a brief summary of some of the budgetary items, as well as a safe learning plan update. I remember when safe learning plan updates would take hours of time. I don't think that should take hours, but Megan's only got one slide. So as far as community engagement highlights, just a few things from the past couple of days. I had a really great experience. I got to meet with the superintendent from Boquet, but also with the tribal chair, Chair Dupuy from the Fond du Lac tribe, and Commissioner Jett. And we met about tribal consultation, but also how Duluth Public Schools and Boquet School District are both emerging as model partners for tribal work. And that they want to work with us and work with the Department of Education to think about how can we continue to lobby for things that matter to all of us. Because I think that sometimes we end up fighting over smaller bits of money when really we have very, very common interests. And so how can we align our work? And there's a deep interest by Chair Dupuy, as well as Commissioner Jett, for all of us to continue that work. So we met for about five hours last Thursday, and it was a really powerful experience for me and others. Also participated in many of the Juneteenth celebrations this weekend. And I want to thank the school board for being forward-thinking and authorizing Juneteenth as a holiday before the state, you know, quote-unquote, made us recognize it as a state. We recognized it because it was an important thing to do from an equity perspective, and it also caused us to be well-prepared for it, where other districts were scrambling at the last minute trying to figure out what were they going to do with canceling summer school activities and things like that. We were, I want to thank the board for their approval there. And then just this afternoon, with member Lockler Kemp, we got to attend, there was a retiree train ride event. We just wished them well as they went off on their journey. But as our retirees, we're very grateful for the partnership with The Depot and Stacy DeRoche, who does a lot of work with our parent groups, also arranged for that train to be something that our folks could take a ride on. Here's just a couple of pictures. There is Assistant Superintendent Bonds showing me how I should grill properly. And as we flipped many a burger in the Central Hill side, I think we cooked about 500 burgers. And afterwards, I'm sure, you know, I'm sure we smelled like a delicious hamburger, but it was a fun, fun event. And I would say that Mr. Bonds, his skills in barbecue are almost as good as his skills in. And then there's also the picture there of all of our retirees at The Depot before we got on the ride today. Sometimes pictures tell more than words can do. We've talked about this before, about our strategic roadmap. We've done a lot of work in the recent weeks with our strategic roadmap. There's links to the video of the roadmap again that you've seen previously. I'm not going to show those again, but we worked with our entire Duluth leadership team on Monday and Tuesday last week, really going deeply into our strategic plan, taking a look at that operational plan, the three-year operational plan that I shared previously, as well as taking a deeper look into the multi-tiered systems of support. And really, as you see here from the state slide, the multi-tiered system of support focuses on five key areas of infrastructure for continuous improvement, family engagement, community engagement, multi-layered practices and supports, assessment, and database decision-making. You'll find that as you look into our strategic plan, that those are deeply woven in to the work of our district and really form the core of where we're going. Around that, we have three easy-to-remember district directions. Sometimes it's hard to make the complex symbol, and so that's what we've tried to do. Our three areas are supporting every student, advancing equity, and improving systems. And we have what are called action cards, which are kind of sub-plans within the big plan. And we'll be sharing those throughout the coming months at our progress monitoring during our committee of the whole meetings. But we have a card for supporting every student, multi-tiered systems to support academics. So basically, everything we're doing from an academic perspective. Also one for what we're doing for social, emotional, behavioral work within the district. We also have an advancing equity card, which really takes a deep look at the work that the school board did in 2018 in advancing an equity framework for the district and reinstates many of the things that were started then, but caused due to shifts in various leadership, but also some things during the pandemic, we're doubling back down on equity. And then a lot of improvement of systems, and that covers a broad area. Three of the cards that we're working on. One is a capacitated programming assessment of the district, taking a look at our capacity of our schools, taking a look at how different programming drives things in certain directions. And that will inform us as far as what steps we might need to take to address balancing some of the needs of our schools as we move forward. I'll be sharing more about that again in coming weeks. Also, our business services card is, basically talks about transparent allocation of resources. We've really worked hard to make sure that our allocation of resources is based on strategic needs of the district, that it's equitable distribution, and then also that there are efficiencies and transparency. I know that's a word that sometimes gets bandied about, but I think it's really important that we are really clear about what it is that we're spending, how it is that we're spending it, and why it is that we're spending it. And then finally, a card for recruiting and onboarding. We recognize that retaining our people that we hire, when we hire great people, we want to make sure that we're retaining them. A big part of doing so is making sure that they're on-warded well. We also want to make sure that in our recruiting, that we're focusing on increasing the diversity of our workforce. We want to make sure that our workforce is a mirror of the students and families that we serve as opposed to being disproportionate with the population that we have right now as far as that goes. And I also know that there are people out there who are thinking about our mentoring programs and thinking about how do we onboard people to make sure that they have the scaffolding around them so that they stay with us. And a lot of times, people think about retention really is the new recruiting. Why retain, or I'm sorry, why recruit somebody new when we retain somebody great that we already have? So those are our action cards that we're focused on. As far as the next steps, we're finishing our vision card that we're working on. We'll also be including some key information from our action cards as we complete that progress monitoring calendar that we shared last month. We're working on that during cabinet retreat next Tuesday, so I anticipate we'd be able to share a relatively final draft for your input at the July committee of the whole or and/or the regular school board meeting so we can look at how are we progress monitoring the main things that we're focusing on. So basically, it is kind of simple. We're calling out some specific areas that we want to focus on more deeply, and we want to lay out for the rest of the year when it is that we'll be coming before you to work on those things. And the month prior to coming before you, we'll be meeting with our cabinet plus group, with our principals, and taking a look at the data internally around those areas. So if we're looking at something like staffing, we'd be looking at it the month prior to presenting to you and making sure that we have that internal dialogue about how are we doing related to those areas. Excellent. Click down there. No. Sorry. There we go. And now I have some budget update information that Simone Zunich would like to share. Just a brief summary. This is the summary we shared with our administrators, and this gives us kind of an overview of where we're at from a budget perspective, since much of the budget information is cut out from our recording. That our last name.
Thank you.
I'll quit this.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So I did present, I was able to present the budget at the committee of the whole on May 30th. Yes. So I will go ahead and do a brief overview again. I just was on MDE checking numbers, and I can confirm that we're still good. So I'm still, I'll still, I'll stick with my numbers. Okay? So you, the general fund includes general transportation operating capital. I don't know if you want me to read all of this. Within the general and operating capital funds, certain revenues will have reserve requirements. And then there are additional funds, which include food service, community service, construction fund, debt service, trust fund, and internal service fund. The process for our general, oh, that's okay. No, no, we're good. I was, I just was going to say the process for our general fund revenue budgeting will include projecting and analyzing current federal, state, and local revenues, along with forecasting legislative or local district changes to revenues. So I just wanted to get that piece out.
Sorry.
That's okay. So our goal for FY24 is to strive for fiscal stability and sustainability for future years. We were able to provide some wonderful programming, and we would like to do that again next year. But then after that, ESAR falls off, and that is our goal, is to maintain these super great programs that have been proven effective. The utilization of ESAR and land sale funds have helped stabilize, or will help stabilize the FY24 budget. So our local levy, it dropped roughly $2.9 million due to LTFM adjustments. This is a very normal process that sometimes, three years ago, we said we were going to get projects done. They didn't come through, so it takes two to three years to work itself through the levy. That's not uncommon, especially with COVID, and there were supply chain issues. So we had to adjust for that. But our state aid increased by 44% due to the special education cross-subsidy that came to $3.7 million. And then our basic formula allowance increased by $2.7 million. So that was wonderful news. We have an assigned fund balance transfer. We are going to offset $2 million in technology from our land sale, and we're trying to be transparent about that. So we'll move that money into an assigned fund balance, and then we'd like to do an assigned, a fund transfer through a journal entry every year to offset our technology costs because we don't have a replacement cycle right now for technology, and it's much needed.
And the land sale is from our central campus up on the hill?
That is correct.
And so if I can add just a little bit.
Yes.
Right, we were able to purchase lots of Chromebooks for our students. We didn't have the referendum passed for technology separate in 2018, but we were able to get one-to-one devices through use of the ESAR funding, which we needed. But we don't have the funding moving forward, so we're using that one-time money of the sale. But as you remember from our committee of the whole presentation with Baird, they talked about how we could potentially have a capital referendum that would, with some bond restructuring, if we did that, for about $5 a month, we could continue to fund this so we wouldn't be having that huge gap. And that huge gap, it is partly technology. It's partly the $2 million that we need to spend to renew our technology each year. But also because we're piecemealing that together with other parts of the budget, if we were able to get a referendum passed for technology, it would likely free us up for a little bit of specking in some other areas that we also view as being critical. So it would be intended for technology, but because the technology is an unfunded burden on our current budget, it would potentially allow us to have a little bit more flexibility in a couple of other areas too.
And when we sell property like that, the money stays in the capital fund, so we can really only use it for curriculum, technology, not for people. So to the superintendent's point, we, we would. So to the superintendent's point, we would like to replace some capital in the district as well. You know, chairs and seats and desks and there's machinery that we would like to replace as well. So it would free up funds for that. Okay, so into the budget, I built in a half a million dollars for programming, which is our elementary school programming. We will have a slight decrease in title funding of 5.6%. The library aid increase, which our superintendent already mentioned, is 140,000.
We go back to that title funding? Is that over, is that 5.6% over our nine, I know not all of our buildings are Title I, but kind of spread out overall. So all of our Title I schools are losing a little bit of money?
That is correct. And it did this, this year in FY '23, we did a backfill with some ESAR funds and our intent is to do the same for next year.
Could you just review for the public the Title I schools, the Title I buildings we have? That's not as easy as we think.
Yeah, so Laura McArthur, Stowe, Lowell, Piedmont.
Myers Wilkins.
Myers Wilkins. You're being testing me. And what else?
Denfeld.
Denfeld.
Is Denfeld a Title, Title I? I mean, I know they are, but I thought we didn't give title to high schools. I don't think Denfeld is, Lincoln Park is.
Lincoln. Let me think, who else?
Was it meant to be, this was a group test?
I'm like trying to remember all of this stuff right now, okay. Thank you for that test. Thank you for everyone's help. Okay, so student support aid, personnel aid is 104,000. English learner revenue increase of $19,000. We don't get a lot of funding for that, so it mostly comes out of our general fund. And there is an American Indian education aid increase of 104,000. Let me go to the next page. So our preliminary proposed budget summary, so our basic FY '24 formula allowance is 7,138 per pupil. This is a 4% increase based on the '23 legislation. Our pupil counts, we are, we're being conservative here, very conservative actually. 7,989, I just checked on MDE, we're still holding strong with that number. Very slight over last year, which was 7985. The projected ADM is 8,034. So I'd rather come to the board next spring saying that we have much more ADM and that we can increase our revenue. So we're going to be conservative there. Food nutrition, breakfast and lunch are free for all students starting in FY '24. The application for educational benefits are free in reduced meals form is still required by MDE to be filled out by families. And details regarding reimbursements to districts are forthcoming. We are still waiting. We will just go ahead and fill out the application and send it to MDE and we're still, we're still waiting on what the actual plan is there. And then of course, other local revenues are estimated by prior year funding amounts.
And then just considering, member Oswald is remote. Can you share the slide number we're moving to, which is now slide 14?
14, thank you. Slide.
And speaking of that, member Oswald, how are we gonna be able to see her hand? Member Oswald, we give you permission to blurt.
She just gave me a thumbs up.
Okay.
Two thumbs, okay, perfect. So our local revenue includes property tax levy, miscellaneous tax revenues, county apportionment, tuition fees, admissions, medical assistance, interest earnings, rent, gifts, bequests, insurance recovery, sale of materials and equipment, and other miscellaneous revenues. And then our state revenue, of course, is included by payments by Minnesota Department of Education and other state agencies. And our federal revenue includes aids awarded through state agencies or directly from federal sources. So ESAR, it's a federal grant, but then it's pushed through MDE and that's how we receive our funds. And of course, we have to spend the money to get the money. Those are all reimbursements.
All right, moving to slide 15.
Thank you. Here I've just captured how to explain our different revenue buckets. Restricted revenue requires a reserve fund balance if funding is not at all spent in the allocated fiscal year. Most restricted revenues are intended to be spent in full in the allocated fiscal year. Restricted reserve revenues come from state and local sources, aid and levy. It is not always easy to spend your restricted fund because it's very defined and sometimes you just can't. So we do create a fund balance and that is part of our audit, okay? Undesignated revenues come from federal, state, and local sources, the largest of which is the basic formula allowance, which is our gen ed aid. Undesignated revenues may include, may have individual calculations, but do not have a required fund balance. And our federal sources are often reimbursements, as I mentioned, and have allowable carryover provisions to subsequent fiscal years. Use of federal funds has limitations. For instance, if we spend anything over $5,000, we have to get permission from MDE. So if a per-unit technology or a bus, I have to prepare a letter to MDE and send them the quote and they have to approve it before we can even go ahead and buy it. Yeah, it's very specific.
Are there times when, when restricted revenues are used inappropriately?
No, we're very, we don't do it. I, we're very careful about that. And we have a budget set with MDE and they tell us exactly where we can spend it. And then our expenditures through our 17-digit UFRS code is uploaded to MDE and that's part of our audit process and that is finalized on November 30th. And there has been times, and it has happened to me too, the day before they say you have something that doesn't work. So we have to go in and make sure it gets coded properly. So we're under pretty strict guidelines with that.
I'd also like to compliment you for the work that we've done in changing our audit methodologies. Prior, in prior years, we just did a compliance audit, which is just kind of a check-in to make sure that we follow the process. Where we moved to more of a forensic audit, where we go much more deeply into how are things being used? Are they coded correctly? Are we making sure that we're using funds that are supposed to be used for certain things? And so I think that that creates not only better clarity for us on our current reality, but it also creates more transparency for the public too.
I appreciate that. And that's why our last two years, our auditor for Wembley said things are getting better. You know, we have, I appreciate a hard audit. I learn every time from them and I always say I love a good audit.
Isn't it also true that MDE has complicated some, or created some challenges for your staff recently with the changes in coding and numbers and all that?
Tremendously. We get a huge grid and they have a committee and they decide how they want things coded. We code them and then six months later, they say, well, we decided that's not a good code. And then someone in our office has to go in and literally reclassify everything. It's days of work. So they, we are held very accountable to MDE. They watch it. I think you have the 24 budget. I won't go through each page, but I thought I could go into the last page. So if you click on that, the last tab.
I like that part of our budget. Does that mean that we're going to?
That's, that's.
We need to travel?
But it's not the budget, sorry.
Is that a restricted fund that we're?
That's restricted.
That's the trend. I don't, I don't see that.
So superintendent Magus, will you please go to the last tab? It says proposed FY '24 budget. So this is the budget that I'm proposing to the school board. Please, our general fund of 136 million dollars. Food service, community service, the construction, we have that budget in here for this year. But of course, that was our new building project and that is going to be all spent down and finished. So that's why you see nothing there. Our debt service, so that's about what we spend every year, slightly higher. Our trust, that is for our retiree insurance. We keep some funds set aside there. And then the internal service fund is our self-paid dental fund. And the bottom.
So you're proposing a budget of 171,988,300?
And if you go all the way to the bottom, if you keep going down, it tells, it explains why. Can you page down a little bit more? Okay, budget breakdown, I'll just tell you, it's 10 million, we have 10 million left in ESAR funding for FY '24 and then 7.8 million in our land transfer. I'm giving you that as a lump sum, but the intent is to spend it in smaller doses at 2 million. I want it to be transparent to the school board and to the public that we did receive that money. We do have a very detailed budget for our ESAR funding for next year. And those, that comes right off the MDE website. In this slide right here, these are actual expenses. We have payroll that still needs to go through through August, so there's an estimation there. And you can see we have an offset by assigned fund balance. And here is our FY '24 budget. Right now, we have six, roughly 6 million budgeted for ESAR. We have unallocated 803,000. Again, I'm recommending, as I said before, for next year, we really, because I'm working with the assistant superintendent, that we purchase items now going forward because those will stay with us for the next five to 10 years. We will keep the staff that we have, but if we can spend money on non-labor items, that would be great. And we can enjoy them for a long time.
Well, with the needs of curriculum and textbooks, good for you.
Yes.
Anything else on this or something like that?
Can you go please to the K-12 ed funding bill? So here I just, for the school board and for the public, I just captured it on one page for everybody. Our adjusted ADM, our APU, which is our pupil unit for the entire city of Duluth. And here's our formula allowance increase of 2.7 million. Our access to feminine products is 17,000. English learner revenue is 19,000. And American Indian education aid of 104. Student support personnel, personnel aid is 104. Our library aid and our special education cross subsidy of 3.7. That all comes to 6.9 million. That's why I put that together for you so you can see the increase to our budget just through our aid for next year.
Are we anticipating from the list here, the offset of what our legislative mandates have been? Like the, I did, you know, see the information in Board Book reported from HR Director Severance about unemployment this summer and where we're going with that. But are you, is that something we should expect to be shared with us? Or is it still so new? I'm still listening to legislative updates by MSBA and AMSD too, so.
They have not determined it yet.
Okay.
We are still waiting. But on the proposed budget, it's the general education revenue fund one over the expenses is over by 1.4 million because I'm not sure yet where all those expenses are going to land. I don't know yet. So we have, I have a little cushion in there built.
Of 1.4 million?
Yes.
For some of those unfunded mandates that we feel might upset the T-card here?
Right, and I'll pop in the expenses when we can, but like unemployment, supposedly we're going to be offset one-to-one.
That's right, for at least.
For a year.
For a year.
For a year. And then perhaps using special education funding going forward. We really don't know yet.
Okay. Are there any other big ahas? Like I know that there are some mandated, you know, offerings in our social studies department as far as civics or ethnic studies or any of that. I don't see that necessarily adding to our overall need or our budget. But were there other, you know, I mean, I remember the unemployment. We know that, I don't know.
I think that there are a lot of, my old accounting secretary used to refer to them as little foxes and sometimes those things add up.
Yeah.
Things like Narcan, we want to have Narcan, but now we're mandated to have Narcan and we have to have it in each of our facilities and we need to have two doses of Narcan. Might be a small expense, but when we look at the many things that are starting to add up there, like the, we still need to learn a lot more about family leave and how that's gonna affect things. The family leave piece is gonna be pretty impactful. But I think that unemployment insurance one is the most impactful because they have identified funding to pay for it, but only for one year. And they specifically wrote it into the legislation that we couldn't levy for as we normally would with unemployment. We weren't, we were, our hands are tied related to levying for any offset of that funding. So I think that that's, puts us in a hard place. And when we talk, when I talked with Commissioner Chad and talked with the tribal chair, we talked specifically about this because if there's an increase in funding that's supposed to go to kids, but we're locked into using it towards something that is not student-related, then that takes away from our, the intent of that fund. So I think it's important for us to continue those lobbying efforts, particularly when it comes to how are we gonna have ongoing funding for unemployment insurance? Because if it's important to do, we want to get it funded.
Will we have by, say, September 1st, a good idea? I don't know, I'm just throwing out a time. How we were impacted by unemployment this summer? When will we have some more real numbers on that?
I believe they. Do you have anything to add?
I mean, I can certainly provide a report of claims that have come through. That would be all I have at this point, just because we haven't paid them, you know, we haven't paid them yet, but.
I just think at some point, it would be helpful for us to understand what that impact was. And I know from being on some of the kind of background training with the unemployment folks, you know, there was just a lot of unclearity and so, yeah.
And I also want to add that our compensatory funding sure did increase. And we will be able to hold harmless, I hope, through FY '26. So when I was building, and I think I, we brought that up the other day too, when I was building our five-year plan, we should be able to hold harmless for several years to come, which will be, it's a good one for the district.
And I hope that. And I noticed in our, in your slides that, you know, you do use the terminology. I listened, you know, when you, when we had some meeting just now about how we refer to the form. We don't want to call it free-reused lunch because it's much more than that.
It's the educational benefit.
Educational benefits. And I'm not so sure that's capturing it either. But definitely, you know, it's been a nemesis for almost my whole time in the big district with how we either do or don't get those forms. And so we'll continue to persevere, but I do like the idea about educational benefits.
And actually, in one of her, in one of her final acts before going on family leave, our communications officer found, Captain Big Media has produced a video that can be used to explain to the public, particularly here in Minnesota, what does this mean and why it's so important for us to get those forms out. So we're looking at making use of that video with our public, just so that we can get, because it is complicated and what we call it does matter. And I think how we, how we collect those forms is really gonna matter. So I really appreciate the forthright communications officer team.
And I appreciate the handout that you provided us with from MDE on the common questions of the free meal, preschool meal program, so.
I will keep you updated on that.
Background, yeah.
Superintendent, would you please click on the budget breakdown? That's the last one, I just want to review. Everyone can look at that. Here on this form, I've broken down the. Here on this form, I've broken down the dollar amount that we anticipate coming in on our revenue budget in our general fund, and then down below our staff development. And I just looked at, again, the MDE numbers, and I'm confident in these numbers. So if you want to page down, just, uh, let's see, here is it?
And I just want to go back, I believe the number, Derek, you had your hand up?
Oh, I can, I'll wait till it's finished, okay.
Sorry.
So here's where I had the breakdown.
Sure.
Uh, revenue notes, here are my notes. Um, ESAR funds is ten million, uh, land sale, seven point eight million, and I put the cross subsidy increase in here and our basic fund allowance. So that gave us an addition, the twenty-four million. So I just wanted to make sure I pointed that out to everybody.
And I think you had on one of your slides that the ESAR funds, when they end?
June of twenty-four.
Yeah.
And the one-six-one I want to point out is for extended day summer school programming. So that is, we have a very narrow window, window there to use those funds. Um, but Assistant Superintendent and I are working with MDE and, uh, trying to bridge that, so we can be creative.
And I think as we saw from prepared presentation, we're in a, we're in a good financial spot for now.
For now.
But in, in a couple of years, when, because the ESAR funding ran, running out, and somebody, other expenditure is creeping in, as well as us not having land sale money to, to, uh, continue to pay for technology, we'll be eating into that fund balance pretty quickly. And so that's probably the reason why I think it's important for us to consider possibility of a, of a referendum and refinancing of our bond.
Those five-year plan numbers, uh, built in all of our anticipated programming and whatnot, so we, so we know really what we're looking at, what we need.
On your breakdown of what to expect for ISD seven oh nine and, and FY twenty-four, and, and you go down the list of all the, the formulas and the library aid, was there any money dedicated to the, the new expectation in the REED programs?
So I just was reading that document, all we get right now is forty-one million was assigned to that program. We don't have any dedicated numbers yet.
Thirty-one, how many districts, what the districts take forty-one million for the whole state?
Uh, I'm using a number, I could be wrong, it could be thirty-one. I just, um, I was just reading through all of that. And right now, we're just being told what the lump sum is, but we don't have a updated number yet.
As, as I understand it, uh, as well, uh, we'll be able to retroactively pay for some of the letters training that we did. So we, we have done work in the area of, of structured lead reading and, and scientific, uh, basic reading strategy. And, uh, from what I understand, that, uh, the past year or two will be able to, uh, be reimbursed by the state using some of those funds. So that, I think that, that, again, some of the progressive work that we've done is, is, uh, going to pay off for us. But I think it's important that we watch that carefully. From what I understand, there are, and well, I think that would probably warrant a full presentation at a committee of all. Uh, but I think it's really important, really exciting work.
And those of us that are able to attend the summer session by the MSBA, there is a, is it our early session on Sunday night? That is dedicated to the legislative, um, platform and program for the REED Act, dissected by people that, you know.
And I'll add that, um, I have it up, uh, it is, they appropriated forty-five million dollars, excuse me, thirty-five million dollars for FY twenty-four for school district and charter schools to, um, receive and support the received curriculum and materials. And there's another thirty-four point nine million dollars for FY twenty-four for professional development, they're making two letter C's. So there's significant funds that have been appropriated, uh, for districts, but how much we receive to be determined.
I just want to pull a little bit on the thread that Superintendent Magus brought up, and then also, um, Executive Director Zunich. When we look at our expenditures, which is our general fund, which is O one, right, general fund, we have a budget of about a hundred and thirty-five million dollars. If you break that down and look by object, and we're talking salary and employee benefits, we spend a hundred and eight million dollars on salaries and benefits, and then that is roughly about eighty percent of our general fund budget. So education, whether it's university, whether it's public, however you want to look at it, is a very people-centric, people-heavy endeavor, because of the nature of the work that we do. So when we think about looking at budgets, we break them down into expenditures and revenue. So when we're talking about a public school budget the size of the Duluth Public Schools, and we need to look at long-term budget planning, and our ESAR money is running out, is winding down, and we have an eighty percent of our general fund budget is people, people that we need to teach our students, you cannot proportionately cut that down as your expenditures go down. It is very difficult in education to then bring your expenditures down, right? When revenue drops, it's very difficult to bring expenditures down, because we are a people-heavy thing, right?
And we're in the, we're in.
And we are about eighty percent of our general fund budget, which is good, because best practices says we should be somewhere between seventy-two and eighty-two percent. So here we're sitting in the middle. So as we think about what we want for our public school kids moving forward, when we have the ce- the cessation of the ESAR funding, how we as a community want to fill that up, so we can provide the best technology for our students, and we can maintain the proper staffing levels for our students, so that we can start working towards our mission and vision. And one of the things that we talk about in our vision is responsible use of resource, resources. And I think we have very responsible uses of resources. So our expenditures, we're using them responsibly, responsibly trying to get them closest to the kids in the classroom, which is why eighty percent of our budget is spent on people. So what we need help with are revenues. And so we have the state of Minnesota, we have the federal government, and then we have our local community. So as we think about what our revenues for our budget look like going forward, we want to make sure we can provide our students with what we need, and not have to go into large classes, decline in technology, not keeping up with curriculum, um, and make sure that we keep those revenues there, so that we can provide the best education for our kids.
Send, thank you very much. And I'd also like to point out that the complete budget, um, the forty-one some pages was published in the Duluth News Tribune, the entire document. And it's also available on Board Book. And we have, uh, provided historical expenditure information, revenue and expenditure by fund. So if anyone wants to take a deeper dive, they can. We've provided, uh, three years of revenue and expenditures for doing.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, and I do have one final slide.
It's the Safe Learning Plan, so.
Safe Learning Plan. There's a link to the Safe Learning Plan there. Oh, that's not showing what I wanted to show, it's showing our cabinet ongoing. Good thing it's not anything too exciting. So here is our, uh, link, there's a link there to the Safe Learning Plan. And, um, basically, the one major change within that plan is, uh, in accordance with CDC recommendations, and active recommendations have been in place for, for quite some time. We're moving to, uh, recommending quarantine rather than requiring quarantine, for, uh, people who are testing positive for COVID. And that's something that's been in place for several months, but we wanted to keep our, uh, even though we tried to follow our, the guidelines from the CDC as closely as possible, we also figured that the end of the school year was a good transition point for us to, to, uh, consider that change. So it's something that we've shared in internal conversation, but we wanted to make people aware that that's part of our Safe Learning Plan moving forward for the coming school year. So it falls in line with other illnesses. So if somebody has strep throat, it's recommended that people stay home. If somebody has COVID, it's recommended that you stay, stay home rather than a requirement. And that concludes my presentation.
Any questions, comments? Reactions, members? Go ahead.
Also, right, because I, I, I think, which I read earlier tonight, if we, we're moving forward with our change to community vision and priorities for the public schools, I think this will be updated for future meetings, or should be updated in future meetings. With our new vision and mission statement.
I think that would be great. I also think that's a great point. Uh, we also, in our, in our, uh, Duluth Leadership Team meeting, we, uh, we're looking over our, our, um, norms for a group, and they were pretty much designed after our last strategic plan. Uh, but now that we have a new strategic plan with different vision, different directions, we're going to be spending a little time revising those norms and, and really making sure that they align with where we're at. So I think it's important as we go forward to take, kind of refresh and look at different documents. Occasionally I'll see a picture of, uh, here I'll see a poster of the weekend Northland, where I'm wearing a mask, um, to pull the mask up, and the mayor's on there and others are on there. And I think it's, that was important work, but it's important for us to periodically go through, uh, as an organization and look and see what needs to be refreshed in our documents.
Or just, the posters could come down in our school buildings every now and then. Somebody, one of those tasks that no one seems to, to really take into account as we walk around our school buildings, that there's probably still some joint speech team, uh, posters up to, I won't do that again until next year, so.
Very good point. Would you like to bring the rest or?
Um, I think we're fine.
Okay.
I think so.
The crowd.
Well, what, um, listening to us is really, you know, the issue as well. Can you hear us in the back? Okay.
Member Oswald, can you hear us? Are you not?
I can hear you just fine.
Oh, we can hear you too, good deal. Again, the computer is behind me, so it would be like Patty or Adele that would give me, uh, a hand wave if, um, Member Oswald puts her hand up. Okay? And then we'll go to Member Lachlan, comments, um, about the superintendent report.
Yeah, just, uh, again, Superintendent Magus, uh, I appreciate your very thorough, uh, report on a number of topics. What I, I'm really excited about, and I've been, been thinking a lot about though, is those action cards. I'm all about action. But, um, um, and I, I, I've been thinking a lot while you were giving kind of the update there about the work that we as a board did, both creating the mission and the vision, but also the work we did at our retreats, uh, and just really reflecting a lot on what our role as governance leaders are. And, um, uh, and so, um, I'm, I'm looking forward to, um, the work that you, our professional staff, and, and many people, uh, are doing on, on those action cards, and on, you know, really doing the work of our district. We're here to govern it, and we're here to support it, um, but looking forward to, um, the incredible thinking that you're putting behind, uh, the details of those action cards. And so I just, um, really want to appreciate that, you know, no sooner did we get graduation done and the school ended, and you, uh, were meeting, uh, with a variety of staff, uh, and many staff that are here in this room as well, to, to really start, uh, creating, um, those, those action steps, those next steps. So I just really been thinking about that while I've been sitting here, and, and appreciate that. And really, uh, when we got the, uh, thank you again, Simone, for, uh, once again, your, your great, uh, budget, um, review now, and the, the, the review you did with us, uh, at the end of May. Uh, that's another key part of what our role is as school board members is, you know, just passing a, a balanced budget and a budget that reflects our mission and our vision. And so I just really appreciate you making it understandable. I've been on the board for ten years, it's a lot to comprehend. I know we have a couple of board candidates here, and you will get lots of training on this. Uh, but, uh, we're very fortunate to have, um, the, the staff that we have that also train and educate us and help us better understand all the different, uh, ways we're funded and, and, and not funded, uh, here in the, uh, in, in school board land. So thank you. And, yeah, so no questions, just really thinking.
I, I was reading an article today at lunch, and it talked about, uh, one of the biggest red flags of bad management, bad leadership, is taking credit for other people's work. And I would very much like to say that this is, this is not my work. This is definitely our work, and it's, it's, uh, the, you know, when I think about the work that, um, Executive Director Severance and Executive Director Zunich do in the areas of finance and operations and facilities and business, that, that's, that's where a lot of the work takes place. And then also, when I think about Assistant Superintendent Bonds and the work he leads with his teaching, learning, and equity team, this is, all I do is put a bow on the beautiful work that they do. And, uh, it's really, um, impressive, and I feel honored to work with, with the team that I do.
You're, you're a good bow tire, because, uh, because of the work of your staff and the way that you've related and built relationship with them, and you trust them, and they trust you, that gives you opportunity to come to our community and build relationships there, so that, um, people see that ISD seven oh nine are schools that people want to come to, because, you know, there is, you know, great stuff going on, and you're making those connections too. I want to just, um, connect with what Member, um, Lachlan Kemp said too, those action cards. And you also gave us a snippet of it in your weekly updates with us. And I, um, being a, a, a teacher that works with rubrics, and, you know, what you want, and who's responsible, and what the outcomes are, and what the date is, and what progress you're making, um, are just really great tools for, you know, if you're going to ask your staff to do some of the things, and I'm looking at Assistant Superintendent Bonds, you're leading this, and you're making, um, you know, a, a map for them, and you're, there's a rubric that has what, what you expect, and, and what they expect, and how they're going to go about it. And I just, um, really appreciate the detail of that, and I can't imagine the work going. So my question to you is, like, after the action card, now where does that go? Does that go to the principals? I mean, the principals are probably in on the action cards. Then they share that with the appropriate, you know, colleagues, teachers that are doing what teachers do, and?
So they, they'll share, they'll, they share that work through their, uh, continuous improvement teams.
Right.
And so at, at the school level, it, it's really, think, thinking about it is how does it cascade through the organization? Or some people use the analogy of kind of, uh, the, like the Russian dolls, the nesting dolls, that they're fit on each other. I think it's really important that there's, there's a through-line connection between, what is it that we want in the classroom, uh, to, to, uh, deliver our most desired daily experiences? And what is it that we're doing at the school level with our principals and supporting them, so that they can, the teachers can be their best? But then as a team, as a district, how are we, uh, both giving direction to where we want to go, but also providing support? So it's, it's supportive, reciprocal accountability.
Thank you.
Probably throw in a couple more buzzwords.
And I really love your presence at Juneteenth and, and many other, um, places within our community that also our board members attend and go to. But I want to, um, so recruiting at Juneteenth, I, I noticed that, did we, did we do that? Were, did we have a table at, at, at there? Thank you, thanks for taking time.
Just wait until the HR Business Services report, and then you'll.
Okay. Okay. But thank you, I, um, I, I saw that, and, and other opportunities too, where we, we are reaching out to, you know, try and encourage people to work in a, a district as great as ours. So, any other? That's right. Member Oswald, anything? Member Ginn?
I'm good.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So we're going to move on to just, um, looking at our schedule of meetings and events. And, um, I'm going to try to flip out of that, but I know that we have, um, talked about, but I maybe I should, you know, looking at our July, um, our July meetings, and, um, probably should have touched base with Superintendent Magus before you leave the room, Superintendent. Did we?
Sorry.
I, I can remember you asking about our meeting in July. Was there something?
Yes, we.
We had talked about that.
Sorry, I apologize.
Did you, did you share it at the, at a call meeting?
We shared that we were going to, um, delay in our work session that we had for the twenty-second, I want to say? And we're gonna, we're gonna, um, move that to the first part of August. And I know we're hoping that Patty, we can work with Patty and put out a Google poll looking for a different date for, uh, early August.
I, I attached to the agenda that I asked for that school board's scheduling meetings for the year.
Yep, I see it.
I removed the July twentieth, I thought, on the work session.
Well, you, you might have, I just was calling my attention to it, so it is off?
And then I have an August date, but now that I'm.
August twenty-fourth?
Yeah, as I'm hearing Superintendent Ginn say, that's too late. Maybe we want to make it an earlier date than this.
Well, and I think we want to do a Google poll.
Okay.
Yeah.
True.
I'll send a Google poll.
Thank you.
Okay. So you see attached to our. So you see attached to our board book, the, um, proposed board meeting schedule. That's important. And then there's also just a schedule of meetings and events coming up just in the next few weeks. And so it looks like we have, um, just coming up, the, the week of July 10th through the 14th, we will have an HR business, we will have a policy and we'll have a monthly committee of the whole on the 13th. Member Lachlan Kemp.
And I just, um, feel bad that I, I, I didn't note this when we looked at that, um, schedule for next year. But I, I just wanted to remind folks, I guess, that August 1st, when we have our policy and committee of the whole meeting is also national night out again. We ran into this last year. I don't know if we could do a poll and see if we could start earlier. Our meetings earlier that day.
I'm, I'm, I'm with it as long as.
Yeah.
The committee camp.
This Aug- Aug coming up?
August 1st is our, it's policy and committee of the whole?
Yeah.
Well, it's hard to move up. Policy is hard to move up because we have workers, people.
I know. We might have to check with people, but I guess I'd like us to consider that.
So that would be another, um, I'll work with Executive Secretary Vaquet to send out a memo with some feedback. Maybe we can flip and do the committee of the whole. Well, that, that's not going to help our. We'll, we'll just have to reach out and see if that either another date or earlier that day. Thoughts? Looks like you want to say something, so if you can.
I was thinking about another, another piece.
Okay. We'll work, we'll work on that tomorrow and send some, some ideas.
I was wondering as we look at the agenda for July, I know this might be not desirable, but sometimes we've tried to keep the, the number of meetings, um, a little bit more limited in July. Would there be any desire from the board to maybe, maybe have shorter condensed versions of all three of our committee meetings at, on the 13th rather than have a meeting on the 11th and run to on the 13th? Just, just a wonder. I'm sort of the budget of the board or find you again. Separate dates, but wondering maybe, maybe in for forty-five minute or do you know, it's eleven or something? Or get it along the road.
My only concern would be in, and it might, is that, you know, MSBA is warning us that there is so many new policies that need, um, so I think they're doing a session this week or next week about some of the more urgent policies. And maybe you guys have already taken care of it because I watched your policy meeting and you guys are pretty, uh, pretty good at getting through what, what also has also been mandated. But I, I think by nature, isn't there, they're usually shorter anyway, just by nature. There's not a, a whole lot of, of, of information, but.
Just a wonder. I think it's more second readings for policy now.
And I think for HR Business Services, we have the budget out of the way. And I think I can auctioneer my way through any meeting at any rate of speed you need to go.
People can like it true.
And so, um, so again, you're just, the thought might be moving all of them to one day, either Tuesday or Thursday?
Yeah.
Kind of bear a word. Yeah, that, that might work.
Yeah.
We could try it, you know, it's something we haven't done before, but it might be efficient. The other thought I just had is, is I wonder if there's a way you could like delay the monthly committee, the whole meeting till almost near the end and not do it August 1st at all. So kind of take off the July 13th, committee the whole if we can, could. And just do policy and HR on one day and then not do the committee of the whole until like July 28th, like delay it 10 days. And, and that would relieve that August 1st, but then give us one near the end of July.
I would be hesitant to add a meeting at this point. I'm pretty certain people have summer plan, you know, add a meeting in July. I mean, in August, we got a month out here, but.
I'm just trying to solve a problem you had with August 1st.
No, no, no. I was just thinking of, of the comment about streamlining the July meetings, so I guess.
And again, you wouldn't have to change anything in the July. You could have those two meetings on those two days. I'm just wondering if you cancel the July, the June, the, the July?
Shouldn't that say July 13th, not June?
It's July 13th for the policy and the committee of the whole and July 11th for the human resources meeting. And I was just, it's just.
But you, but you, if she sees on the calendar, it says June, we know it's July, but.
I'd be amenable if, if, if nothing is going on with Executive Director Zunich for our HR Business Services to move to that Tuesday.
To the Thursday?
Thursday, whatever. Yeah, that's what I meant, for sure. Yeah.
The 13th?
Yeah.
That'd be great. I just, I, I appreciate that.
Yeah.
And then, so the 1st, we could either start earlier or?
And maybe you could try not to, maybe have a policy meeting on the 1st. Maybe you could do, you know, policy could just be on that July, you know, I don't. It, it, it really is kind of hard to predict what we need right at this moment because it seems like there's things that need our attention.
Member Oswald? Do you have any, we lost? I think we lost or something.
Maybe we go back to that idea that.
I am, oh, sorry. I didn't mean to cut anybody off, but yeah, I have a comment in that, um, I don't think I should comment because I don't know about my medical conditions at the time of these meetings, but I can tell you that I'm going to be, I mean, I, I know for sure where I'm able to participate. My ability to participate in lengthy meetings is going to be extremely hard. And I apologize for my dog whine.
Okay, so noted. And was somebody going to say something?
I, I was just going to say, I maybe rather than kind of talking digs here, we, we do what we, we talked about at the beginning of this discussion, having Patty, um, do a doodle poll and see what seems to work best for people when we all have our schedules in front of us.
Thank you. And I want to excuse myself for just. But anything is next for committee?
We're going to go on to, um, number nine on our agenda, report of standing committees. And our first standing committee, um, review and is monthly committee of the whole, June 15th, 2023. And Assistant Superintendent Magus will just briefly, um, review that committee of the whole meeting.
Thank you. And as always, lively discussion during the committee meeting. There was a presentation given by Executive Director Simone Zunich related to the PSS renaming resolution. There was also a discussion related to the concurrence, non-concurrence. There will be some additional options for dialogue later during the consent agenda, I believe, for the concurrents, non-concurrents that was presented by myself as, as well as Superintendent Magus. I want to thank Adele Owens and others for participating in a review of our new handbook, new handbook for the 23, 24, uh, coming year. And so there was a live dialogue related to all of the new formatting of the student handbook. Believe it more user friendly and hopefully more accessible for families and students. And also a reduction in the number of pages related to the student handbook. We believe it's, um, a handbook that hopefully could be more useful for families as well as students. It is also again re-formatted following, um, in this, in the, in this PA's model policy for our student handbook. And so we really proud of the new handbook. So I want to thank all the individuals who worked on the handbook, including, again, Adele Owens. And then there was also a presentation related to finances, again, given by Executive Director Simone Zunich, related to the five-year fiscal outlook presentation by, uh, as well as a presentation by Beard. And so that guided our committee of the whole meeting.
Any questions or comments about our committee of the whole?
It was lively. Thank you so much.
It had a lot of information, so I, I was able to watch it after I returned from my, um, national speech and debate tournament in Phoenix and found it, um, I had to watch it in chunks, you know, because two and a half hours is not a long time to sit.
Is that how long it was?
It's, it's better to, it doesn't seem as long when you're here now, but when you're sitting, watching it. But, you know, really good.
Because it's so engaging.
Yeah, yes, that's right. Well, I'm an, I'm an interpersonal, in-person connector anyway. I'd rather be with everybody listening than, um, watching a screen. But, um, but thank you, but I'll continue to watch it because there's just a lot of information, especially in the beard, is that how you say it, beard presentation and our financial, uh, future. And it's just really exciting, good stuff. And, and I thought the student handbook looked amazing and I'm glad that, um, member Sodelski caught your, um, your, your name thing because, you know, and then I think, um, um, Adele, did you get the correction with my address too? Okay. Not that I wouldn't mind having an incorrect address in the handbook in case anybody wants to send me something that, that, that always positive, but, um, I appreciate that. And again, I think that, um, I was member, I think I was mentioning this to member Lachlan Kemp, that between the policy work that was really done really well and our handbook, and it does look completeness, but you never know what you need in that handbook until you, you don't have it in the handbook and then you make that addition. So every year I'm sure that it, it, there's, there's some tweaking that has to be done. But, um, from a teacher's lens, I, I see great stuff and reminders. There's some, there's some things in there that are, are, you know, explicitly stated now that's going to happen between our dress code and the regulations, our cell phone, um, policies and, and the regulations. And, uh, and I know that, I know that when we have handbook information and policy that are updated and current and it's there for, then that's what helps us guide our, our community, our students, our staff to knowing what their expectations are as well. So, thank you. Next on our agenda is the committee, um, just review of our HR Business Services. And we'll turn it over to Chair Peter on that review. So here we go.
Here we go. So we started out, we had it on Tuesday, August, or excuse me, June 13th. We had no guest presentations for, for this meeting, so we moved on to our departmental report. Started out with Human Resources with Director Severance. And we were introduced to our new HR Resource Manager, Charlie Cook. So he was at the meeting. It was great to have him there. And I believe that HR is staffed. Yay! So we take a minute and, um, rejoice in that. Charlie has some great experience. He has a bachelor's degree in human resources, a master's degree in teaching. He's going to have that lens of, um, what public schools, how they work. So it's going to be really help, helpful for our department. I know Director Severance is exciting. Um, we've had a lot of, HR has been attending and working very hard to attract people to our district to come work for us. They've attended Hiring Now, job, it's like Hiring Now! Job Fair Series, Fair Series at the Duluth Career Force, um, a hiring table at the Mini Powo at Denfeld High School. We also had a job information table at the NAACP, um, Juneteenth Celebration. We sent out our mailers, so hopefully everybody got our mailer in their mailboxes. That's a great. And I believe, um, member Oswald had asked a question or maybe it was member Kirby that we now, how did you hear about us? We now have a little box to check so we can use our resources responsibly and see how effective our mailing is. So I'm really glad to see that we do those following up. The payroll team has been very busy as they work for summer payoffs for our certified staff. And now we're just starting to see our unemployment claims, um, come in based on this new legislation. And the HR, the HR team is expecting to have about 200 claims this summer to process. So, um, that's going to be a lot of additional work, which would be one of those unfunded mandates is how do we staff that with time and do everything else that we expect out of HR. Um, the benefits department hosted a Calm challenge during the month of May. We had great engagement. In fact, Calm has asked a couple of our staff members to go down and be part of a.
A, a wellness, um, seminar.
Yeah, a wellness seminar in the cities, correct?
Yeah, National Wellness Seminar. They're going to be speaking on behalf of Calm and how we utilize it as our, as our school district.
So that's great advertisement for our district. We are all, the department is also working to move our retiring Cobra billing over to Inovalo Benefits Administration. So far that transition has been smooth and effortless. And then lastly, in June, they're starting to process all the retiring employee severance packages to ensure that everybody gets their earned funds. So that's great to hear. For the 2023, 2024 school year date, this is a number to be celebrated. We have, um, 159 certified staff positions that have been posted and we have 95, um, employees that have been hired and 22 that were roughly waiting to. So we are getting very well staffed, um, and that's great news. Partly or not mostly due to the work that the administration has done in streamlining how we, um, replace positions and a lot of other work. So, um, kudos to our, to our HR department. Currently, when we look at contract negotiations, we have eight bargaining units that have requested to bargain, which is our non-certified, non-certified business, um, division administrators, our paraprofessionals, our food service employees, clericals, principals, teachers, executive employees and education directors. Administration has been meeting with principals, have had some negotiation sessions. And the first meeting with our pairs will be held on June 23rd. And we are very excited to start this work together with our bargaining units. How'd they do?
Perfect.
Good. All right, awesome. Moving on to business services and we'll look at our enrollment report. Of note is that we still see that we are running ahead of our budgeted ADM by about 98 students. Why that number is important, if you go back to the, um, Executive Director Zunich's presentation about our budget, we budget on how many students walk through the door. We use conservative budgeting numbers so that we don't have to go back and revise our budget because we are in deficit, because we said we're going to have more students come through the door than we actually have. So our enrollment numbers are looking positive. Moving on to Child Nutrition Department, for that report, we are still waiting on MDE to tell us how the heck we're supposed to, um, pay for and distribute our universal free meals for both breakfast and lunch. We're starting that planning as best we can. We've started out, um, making sure that every student will have one free breakfast and one free lunch. We're not sure how many students are going to be using free meals, so we're trying to figure out how we purchase the right amount, the right amount of food and how we use our resources responsibly. We will be working very hard to make sure that we market to our families and our public the educational, not free and reduced lunch, but educational.
Benefits form.
Benefits form. I need to get better on that. Um, we also have, of note, um, we have 20 jobs open next fall for our kitchen, so we need help in our child nutrition. And of note, we have free meals this summer at Denfeld, Lincoln Park, Piedmont, Lor Mac, Myers, and I feel like I'm missing some other places where we're offering our meals for the summer.
Myers, Piedmont, Laura MacArthur.
Denfeld or?
Denfeld.
Not Lincoln?
Not Lincoln.
Denfeld.
And Stone, and Stone.
Edstone, thank you. My family will be taking advantage of that this summer just to get them out of the house and walk up to Piedmont. Okay, moving on to the facilities report. Sorry, my computer's being.
Yes, so is mine.
So must be good. I know, just a little wackadoo. I'm trying to move here. Okay, so we have vacancies in our, um, okay, let's start. So facilities management has done a great job of completing work orders and still have quite a few work orders to complete. We are servicing our turf fields and our summer lawn care has begun capital construction. The Denfeld tower work is complete. It looks beautiful. Every time I drive to Denfeld, I admire how pretty it is. FY24 Congdon playground construction, um, that will be started. The FY24 Congdon field improvement bid has been received and accepted. Ordine is getting their turf replaced on the 12th, so that has started. And low basketball courts and new playground fencing has also begun. Um PSS Track Lane One ponder mediation is still ongoing, so there you go. Um we are working on purchasing property for the Lowell entrance. As we know, we have some difficulty in Lowell with pick-up and drop-off. So we're working with the county and the city to figure out how we um improve traffic flow. So we purchased um property for the Lowell entrance. And it's like feet. I mean, it's not a.
It's a tiny.
Yeah, it's.
Part of the pork chop.
Yeah, part of the pork chop. Um construction on our DSC building is moving forward. We should be getting in there soon. It's very exciting. And that's what we have for facilities. When we look at technology, technology is moving along. Um we are ever vigilant on making sure we keep our technology infrastructure safe. And there's a whole bunch of projects that um technology is working on. Um DSC, our district services building is gonna be huge. Also Lincoln Park, we're making sure at Lincoln Park, Ordean and district-wide, we're making sure we have our video cameras fully functioning. Upgrading our servers and making sure that we have um access points for our wireless networks all across the district. So these are big numbers when we look at our technology, which is why we need to transfer 2 million bucks a year in order to pay for it. Moving on to transportation, um we have, are working on some software upgrades. And we will be looking at a, if you move down, we are looking at under the consent agenda, under a new job description for a bus driver. And Director Severance, this bus driver, we're essentially moving it from like a nine-month position to a 12-month position.
Correct. And there'll be some additional, there's some additional added duties um about helping to service some of the minor service pieces of the buses. So that they have that work to do over the summer and this is.
And we're hoping that maybe that helps us attract some bus drivers as it'll be a longer position.
And is that for all bus drivers? We're offering the 12-month opportunity or we're gonna hire five?
We're gonna hire, look to hire three to four for this summer. And then kind of see how that, how that works and then we'll assess next year what that, then you bank on.
So under our recommended resolutions, we have acceptance of donations to the Duluth Public Schools. Acceptance of grant awards, adoption of our FY24 budget. Um resolution for membership in the Minnesota State High School League for Denfeld and for East. Underneath our consent agenda, we have our staffing report with the change in the drop description for the bus driver. We have our finances and our fundraising, our financial report and our fundraising report. We have a couple bids out for vending services and for the Congdon school field improvement. A contract that is important is our Duluth area family YMCA, our key zone program. That's so important for so many of our families in the district. You can go ahead and look through our property updates, our expenditure contracts, no cost contract revenue and grants. And that's the work that we did at HR Business Services this month. Are there any questions? Great.
Did I have a question? Did I write it down? Oh, just a question about, I, I, I know the struggles that our um nutrition department must have. If they don't know what MDE is going to budget for our meals and hoping they order their food so that it's here in the fall to prepare.
We're just getting ready. You're going to provide breakfast and lunch and figure it all out.
But do we get to buy premium eggs or do we have to buy the cheapest eggs or?
I think we will buy, we're gonna buy pizza.
That's right. You did that bit already.
That was exciting, I felt like.
And our dairy, and our milk bed.
But actually, you know, we were not able to watch the HR business. But because um we are so um lucky to have the staff we have, that we get a report from transportation, from our director. We get one from our nutrition service. We get one from our, you know, HR and our business services. We get them from technology that I, we're, we're all able to read those reports, even though we don't attend the meeting. We're, we're able to gain a whole lot of, of what happened at that meeting by what, by reading all of the um board book information. That is open to our community to read as well. So I appreciate that. That's why I knew that you guys were at HR tables, that um to recruit to. Any other comments about our HR business service meeting? Then we'll move on to yet another um committee, our, our policy committee chaired by member Lachlan Kemp.
Hey, great, thank you. Uh yes, so we met Thursday, June 15th. And um again, you know, reviewing policies is a key role of school board members. And I just always wanna really thank our staff um for the hours of work that they um put into bringing these policies to us and working with other staff across the district to uh make sure it's, it's uh reviewed uh by lots of uh perspectives. And so just a big thank you on that. Uh and um again, uh all of our, our policies also are often come from NSVA, our school board association, or the superintendents association. They're based on state laws and, and statutes. So they're vetted that way as well. And so um, uh I just really appreciate all the work that happens before it comes even to us. Um but we had a very lively.
Lively again?
Live, get long uh uh policy meeting on June 15th and we got through a heck of a lot. So I'm really appreciative of Amber Sodowsky and, and Paul um Sanholm, uh who serve on this committee with me as well to, to go through all these, these policies. So um I am going to, um we have three policies for the first reading. And I'm just gonna quickly read the purpose of each of those. I'm not gonna do it when I get down to the policies for the second reading. Just a heads up because I did it last time, but I do wanna do it for the first reading. So policy 503 is student attendance. And uh this policy uh has a lot of this new language, um particularly around mental health and treatment um for attendance. And uh also in this policy, um a lot of the changes also moved um language to the regulations, which uh we also talked about at the end of this meeting. Uh but uh student attendance, the, the school board, the purpose of this policy is the school board believes that regular school attendance is directly related to success in academic work. Benefits students socially, provides opportunities for important communications between teachers and students. And establishes regular habits of dependability important to the future of the student. The purpose of this policy is to encourage regular school attendance. It is intended to be positive and not punitive. This policy also recognizes that class attendance is a joint responsibility to be shared by the student, parent or guardian, teacher and administrators. This policy will assist students in attending classes. So first reading on that. Uh the next policy was 102, equal educational opportunity and we updated this. And um, let's see here. I did have this in order. The purpose of this policy to is ensure that equal educational opportunity is provided for all students of the school district. And there were a, a number of um updates in this policy. Uh so make sure you kind of review all of them for those of you who weren't at that meeting. And um we had passed this policy or updated it back in 2019. And then the next policy was policy 504, which is student dress and appearance. And this is replacing policy 5100. And the purpose of this policy is to enhance the education of students by establishing expectations of dress and grooming that are related to educational goals and community standards. And in this policy, there was a lot of really positive language changes um in this policy. So those all are for um a first reading, policies for the second reading. Uh and again, um I'm, I'm not gonna read the purpose of it as I did last time. But uh policy 901, community education, that's a new policy. Policy 712, video surveillance other than on buses. This is replacing uh 3188, video security other than on buses. So that's new. Uh policy, the next one is 509, enrollment of non-resident students. And this is replacing 5035, non-resident enrollees. That's an NSVA model policy. Uh the next one uh is policy 532, use of peace officers and crisis teams to remove students with IEPs from school grounds. That's a mandatory policy. Uh E, uh five, policy 514, bullying prohibition policy. That's mandatory. And uh just a one caveat on that one is we did add uh an additional uh uh piece that was required by state statute uh on that one. And it is um under the definition section, and it's about malicious and sadistic conduct. Um means creating a hostile learning environment by acting with the intent to cause harm, by intentionally injuring another without just cause or reason, or engaging in extreme or excessive cruelty or delighting in cruelty. And that was required, that we added that uh when we updated this policy. So we went ahead and did it in our um second reading of it um to bring forward to you. Uh and then the next uh second reading policy, policy 515, protection and privacy of pupil records. This is replacing 5060 uh uh and that's a mandatory policy. Uh then policies for, and, and all of these policies will be on the consent agenda. Uh the next section was policies for review and we have policy 530, immunization records. And there were some changes in that and also it was a renumbering um from a 5140. And then the last area, which a lot of great work was done, particularly by Jacob Laurent and Jason Crane and Jen Larva, of working with student groups, were the regulations that go with these policies. And that's again, the practices that we follow. And there was a lot of student input that was gathered with um these uh regulations. So uh the first one was 541, regulation gender inclusion. Uh 503, uh regulation student attendance. Uh 504, regulation student dress and appearance. And then 515, student records update form. And that's, that's a new form or an updated form. And so that was a, a lot of great discussion. And again, all of these will be on the consent agenda. Mother Sanholm, is there anything else you'd like to add to our lively policy meeting we had?
Nothing to add. I hope everybody got, had a chance to at least listen to some of it or catch some of the discussion or those policies that generated discussion after, you know, especially those that, those policies that affected the classroom. And then, and I was able to look at with a teacher lens and like Chair Wolf, who that, you know, recognizes some of the changes that are good. And um will, I think, be beneficial or welcoming then for our students.
And I just wanna agree with you. I, as I listened to the policy committee meeting, I thought how lucky we are to have three uh members of our school board that have rich connections with the parents, with students. Currently, parents of students that have all been there. Uh school board members who are active in PTA and community events and then the lens of teacher. You know, just a nice makeup of the three school board members that oversee the policy committee and bring those questions, those observations, those agreements to make um us tumble through all these policies. Cause yeah, there's a, there was a lot of policies there. And then um just really reaching out to superintendent, assistant superintendent. Um I think policies are really important. I really wish there was like an incentive that we would give to all staff, like could this be a professional development hour? You know, that you can verify that you look through, you know, specific policies. I mean, I think all of the policies should be read, but boy, if you could give a list to principals that say, here are policies. I know some of them we have to read as teachers and actually have the students sign. Like I think the harassment bullying one is a really formal policy that we're asked to read aloud in our early days. And then they have to sign a form that says we covered that. But you know, I look at the years of, of my service in the, in the district and then look at the fact that, I don't, I don't know, policies were ever given as much attention as they should be. And again, it's kind of like the same thing I said earlier. As a teacher, I don't really know the policies I should have known until I violate them and find myself saying something or, you know, assuming something. Only to find out that there's a policy that directly makes whatever I just did really not the way the district has wanted us to go. And that, that, and so I don't, I don't want to, you know, punish it. I don't wanna put this out there as a, like you better read it. I, I just think that as, as staff, we're not always aware of the policy until, again, we, we, we nudge it a bit. And then we find out, and I, I'd rather not have that happen. So I don't know, I don't know what, how, how the district's vision is for rolling out policy and making sure our, our building principals are communicating with staff, the, the really important ones that need to be, you know, really, really studied so that they.
I think it's important for us to provide summary to the, the principals so that they're aware. Um so that they can follow up with their staff, which we usually do at the beginning of the year. Um and I do think it's important. I think that this also illustrates our need for more professional development time.
Yeah.
Because we simply don't have the time within our calendar to uh take care of all the, the somewhat bureaucratic important things like bloodborne pathogens and those trainings. In addition to scaling up our teachers, in addition to gaining new knowledge on policy. Uh so that will be something that we, as we work through labor management, will be, and that our teachers are interested too. But it's coming to agreement to what that might look like as far as increased professional earning opportunity. But it is important that our, our staff understand the deep policies that are intended to follow.
Member Kirby has a question.
I have a question over clarification. This is on the uh gender identity.
Regulation.
Regulation. And it's on page, I think 142, staff expectations, number three. It just seems inconsistent. It says, I'm not arguing with the whole, the idea. But upon written oral requests from a student who grades kindergarten through 12 and regardless of parental consent, blah, blah, blah. Then the last sentence said parental consent will be required in grade kindergarten through five. So are they or are they not? I mean, it seems you're saying one thing in the first sentence and another thing in the last sentence.
You're right. I think that we have to, as I watch, Adele and Patty, there was some, um we, we wrote it one way, but we received guidance from our, our attorney. That having a difference between elementary and secondary was, was important, especially if we're gonna align with other districts and what they're doing. And so it should read uh that, that it is uh not required at secondary level, but it is required for the primary level. So we can correct that between now and our, our next review.
I think there's also something said um in the policy about um for clothing. Like that they'll be asked to dismiss for the day. And I was thinking K through three can't dismiss, but they can for half a day, I think. So just something about that, about dismissal. But now dismissal in K through three is not allowed through legislative mandate. But I think that that policy reads, yeah, that policy reads that they can, that K through three, they can ask for the student to leave for the remainder of the day.
But it has to be a.
There's some, something. Yeah, so.
Member Gerbier.
Yeah, okay, I just wanna, I have just two quick questions on, on policy 102, equal education opportunity. Um when I look at the general statement of the policy, um we've, so we've added things to that the policy of the Duluth Public Schools is to provide equal education opportunities for all students. The district doesn't discriminate. So we've added things like religion, parental. So we've added things like religion, parental status, some of those others. So we are expanding it outside of the traditional protected classes, correct? Okay, so then when we, so if this is the, so then do those same um, descriptors that we've laid out in A, when we talk about the school district prohibits the harassment and discrimination of any individuals based on what we're saying in A, right? So our policy for thirteen is gonna cover if somebody, if a student is being harassed or discriminated because of a parental status or something. So is that, so we're, do we have to do any rectifying with what we have said in the general statement of policy with A, with those categories there? Do we have to do any rectifying with then policy four thirteen?
I think we'd have to uh, get some, a little bit of legal review on that.
Okay.
Because of uh, the potential difference between uh, protected class and other mean, like, I, I think ethically and philosophically, we wanna make sure that everybody is protected, no matter what.
Yeah.
As you, as you know, certain uh, certain classifications are, are viewed differently from the legal status. And so we wanna make sure that we, we even align. Philosophically, however, I think, as you, I think we all agree-
Yeah.
That we wanna make sure everybody's protected.
Yeah, I'm just curious if we have alignment between that general statement of policy for A, and then what we talk about in policy four thirteen, which is our policy on harassment. That's my only question there. And then-
Are, are you talking about five fourteen, the bullying policy?
Well, it says here, refer to the district's policy on harassment-
Oh, okay, okay, okay.
Policy, policy four thirteen, yeah, that's. And then the other question, I just had one more quick question. When we, on D, when we say the school district prohibits sexual harassment, discriminate, discrimination of, in the individual on the basis of sex, do we need to add gender into that when we're thinking about Title IX? I, that would just be something I would also ask.
And so then we can make sure we're capturing uh, the specifics, are, are you able to capture- the specifics? Alright, so can we start with uh, then? Let's, let's-
I can go to Patty when it's done, and I-
But you have a suspicion we missed, you capture where you, where you are-
Yeah.
discrepancies and, and things we need to consider, and then go back and do those things.
Yeah, this is great work. I'm in a hundred percent thank you to the policy committee, it's just popping into my head. And I would just under D, where it says, an individual on the basis of sex and educational programs. I'm not sure if gender needs to be added there as well, when we talk about Title IX. So, those are just-
And this is the first reading, so this is where we want the feedback, so, yeah.
Great, appreciate that.
So thank you, thank you for all the um, hard work.
So section A and section B.
D.
E.
Section B and D.
Yep.
Or N A.
Yeah.
A B and-
A B and-
A B and-
And some of what she's referring to is NSBA's changes. So that would be, theory would be, Maro from NSBA would be a good person to review that with.
Correct. Yep.
So thank you all for your work.
Yeah, and I thank the committee, and I think we've exceeded our, our goal of getting through a quarter of our policies this year.
That's incredible work. Yeah, thank you.
Okay, so um, I, are there any other questions or comments? And again, um, we will have a second reading of those first poli, the three policies I mentioned. Uh, and with the regulations, that is more informational. So any thoughts that you might have there, you can share with um, Anthony and, or with us, and then we'll make sure it gets to the folks who did the main work on, on those regulations. Okay, but they're informational. So that concludes my report. I wanna mention that these will be up on the website as um, as we get, get them. All of the policies are put up on the website in a short timeline after the second reading. So, thank you, Patty, for that.
Thank you, Patty.
Yeah.
So moving on to our agenda, we're on number ten, and it's just general board committee updates. And those are those committees that we all sit on, whether it's the Parks and Rec, or the EAP, or the, I don't know, what other committees?
Government inter-
Yeah, intergovernmental, um, Area P, the parent, you know, the PTA, the parent, uh, Citywide group, the Head Start group. Anybody have? And I, I was gonna save this till later, but it really fits in here as just um, a general, like, thank you to the board members who, you know, just as general information, we have kind of three mandatory meetings that we all attend to, our committee as a whole, our committee meeting, and our regular school board meeting. But all of you serve on um, outside this boardroom's committees. So I estimate that, on average, board members attend five to six meetings a month. That is one to two meetings a week. Um, and that's to be recognized, that's to be um, appreciated by all of each other. We all lean on each other and, and keep each other going. But that's a, that's a lot of commitment, and um, we, we love it. I know that's why we do the work we do. But I just wanna recognize that there's a, there's a lot more than just the recorded meetings that we attend. Next is, um, I'm looking for a motion to accept our consent agenda. And our consent agenda has a lot of information um, that will pass now tonight. All of the committees that were reported um, will be accepted on a consent agenda. Anything in our HR business, our contracts, our bids, will be accepted on the consent of agenda. Our field trips, our diploma requests, um, all of the policy, first reading policies. Our handbook is on this, um, and so are just, you know, a number of different policies and reviews. So I'm looking for a motion to accept the consent agenda that we've all had in our agenda board book for a, a few days. I'm looking, um, a, um, member Eater makes the motion for our consent. Um, a second from member Kirby. All those in favor of, of accepting and, and approving our consent agenda, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero.
I just wanna check, Alana, uh, member Oswald?
Oh, I'm sorry, Alana, yeah. Member Oswald?
Yes.
Yep, there you go.
Sorry, I couldn't tell you.
Okay, good job. So a motion carries six zero. Moving on to our agenda, we are next on our regular agenda is all of our resolutions. And we have um, seven of them. And so um, they're, they're numbered, pages have numbers, two through eleven. And so we're gonna start with a resolution from member Eater.
Um, resolution, the resolution relating to the naming of a school facility. Just had it move my computer, oh, prolonging the meeting everywhere.
Benny, so sorry.
Oh, no, I just need the number on it, I'm sorry.
Oh, then-
Here we go, resolution B dash six dash twenty-three dash thirty-nine seventy-one. Whereas board policy eight ten, naming rights and naming school facilities establishes the criterion procedures for granting naming rights in relation to school district facilities. Whereas pursuant to board policy eight ten, the school district may name or rename a school facility by either passing a formal resolution or entering into a written agreement that addresses the nature of the new naming or naming rights. Whereas the school owns a facility currently named the Public School Stadium, which is a stadium located at Denfeld High School. Whereas under board policy eight twelve, once a facility is named, the name will be, remain with the facility unless changed or removed by the school board. Whereas the district received a naming rights request with respect to Public School Stadium. Whereas in accordance, in accordance with board policy eight ten, a committee was created to consider and recommend an appropriate name for the Public School Stadium. Whereas in accordance with board policy eight ten, naming rights may be by consideration in which a contributor makes a financial contribution, sponsorship, or the provision of equipment, materials, land, or services in return for naming rights. Whereas alternat, or alternatively, naming rights may be recognition in which the naming rights are a recognition of outstanding service to the school district in an academic or administrative capacity, recognition of an achievement or distinguished alumni, or recognition of generous financial or other contributions that was not rendered in consideration of granting the naming rights. Whereas the committee met and considered a number of proposed names for the Public School Stadium, and has recommended renaming by recognition to the Walt Hunting Stadium and the Marv, help me, I'm-
Hykenen.
Hykenen, thank you, Field. Sorry to Mr. Hykenen's family. Whereas the school board is a body which ultimately decides whether to remove an existing name or whether facilities shall be renamed. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the school board of independent school district seven oh nine as follows. The stadium currently named Public School Stadium, located at Denfeld High School, four oh one North Forty, Fourth Avenue West, Duluth, Minnesota five five eight zero seven, is hereby renamed as following, Walt Hunting Stadium and Marv-
Hykenen.
Hykenen Field. The name change shall be effective on July first, twenty twenty-three, and shall be named in effect unless changed according to board policy eight ten. District staff are directed to take all steps necessary to um, effecate this change, including but not limited to purchasing signage for the stadium, which shall be subject to school board approval to the extent necessary by Minnesota law or district policies for purchases. Resolution B dash six dash twenty-three dash thirty-nine seventy-one.
Is there a second?
Second.
Member Sandholm, seconds? All those in favor of passing this resolution, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Alana raised her hand.
Thank you.
Yep.
This motion, all, all those nay? Motion carries six zero. Our next resolution is our resolution of concurrence and non-concurrence. We've all had a copy of it, you had a chance at the call meeting to review it. It's resolution, I move resolution E dash six dash twenty-three dash thirty-nine sixty-five, the resolution of concurrence and non-concurrence for ISD seven oh nine. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor of, of um, our, our concurrence and non-concurrence, which now will go to the Minnesota Department of Education, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries six zero. Our next resolution is, um, member Lachlan Kemp.
Page. And this will be a roll call vote. Uh, resolution, I move resolution B six two three three nine six six, resolution acceptance of donations to Duluth Public Schools. Whereas Minnesota statute four six five oh three requires the school district to accept donations by resolution expressed in the terms prescribed by the donor in full. And whereas acceptance of the donations in accordance with the donor's terms is in the best interest of the Duluth Public Schools. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Duluth Public Schools does accept the below described donations from said organizations in accordance with the terms set forth herein. Be it further resolved that the Duluth Public Schools wishes to extend its grateful appreciation to these various individuals and organizations. Uh, Lowell uh, Elementary, Lester Park, Denfeld, uh, Denfeld twice, received donations um, from uh, Lester Park Foundation, Irving Community Association. Um, there, and Jeffrey Whitrick for everything from popsicles to the Duluth, Denfeld prom to a Valley Fair trip, so uh, I move B six two three three nine six six.
I second. Oh, it's, it's gotta be a roll call, so, I, but I do second, that's right.
Okay, so um, member Derek Eater?
Yes.
Uh, member Kirby?
Yes.
Uh, member Lachlan Kemp, member Local?
Yes.
Member Oswald?
Yes.
And member Sandholm?
Yes.
Okay, it passes six zero, Chair Local?
Going on to-
Okay, I, I would just like to add a thank you to the Duluth Public Department for their contribution of five thousand, five hundred dollars for Denf, to Denfeld High School for the Valley Fair student recognition trips. I think again, that's a, a great contribution for our students and to, to recognize them and to support them.
And I'll just really share too, I mean, it is great.
Yeah.
That, it is really Lieutenant Ken Swab who requested the money. The money came from the Irving Community Foundation.
Okay.
But still, for Lieutenant Ken Swab to fill out the form and validate that it's a, it's a great use of money for our Denfeld students. Um, and Irving Community Association has been a, a great um, a, a, a great partner in helping all of our schools in our area um, do the things we love to do.
And, and our prom advisor, Tammy, got it.
Yes.
You know, what she did, her Denfeld students have a great prom, yours.
We appreciate that. Our next resolution, member Sandholm, page seven.
Okay, resolution, acceptance of grant awards to Duluth Public Schools. Uh, whereas Minnesota statute four six five point zero three requires the school district to accept grants by resolution expressed in the terms prescribed by the donor in full. And whereas acceptance of the grants in accordance with the donor's terms is in the best interest of the Duluth Public Schools. Now, therefore, be it resolved that Duluth Public Schools does accept the below described grant and said organization in accordance with the terms set forth herein. Be it further resolved that Duluth Public Schools wishes to extend its grateful appreciation to this organization, this organization, uh, organization DSACF. Carolyn Sortson for, to East High School, East High School Science, uh, in the amount of uh, one thousand six hundred ninety-six dollars for science equipment upgrades and replacements, which as a science teacher, Carolyn, I thank you. And I'm sure the science teachers across the district also, thank you. Uh, so I move resolution B six two three three nine six seven.
Second. All those in favor of this resolution, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries six zero. Our next resolution, member Kirby, page eight.
Resolution B six twenty-three thirty-nine sixty-eight, adoption of the fiscal year twenty twenty-four budget. Be it resolved by the school board of district, school district number seven oh nine, St. Louis County, State of Minnesota, that the fiscal year twenty twenty-four budget as presented to the school board be adopted. I move that this resolution be adopted.
A second?
Second.
Member Eater seconds. All those in favor of accepting the FY twenty-three, twenty-four, or just twenty-four budget, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Member Oswald?
I'm sure she's giving a thumbs up.
I raised my hand, but I know you can't see it, I see it.
So, um, motion, all those in, uh, any nays? None. All in favors, no.
We're all in.
Motion carries six zero. I got it, I got it. Okay, Kelly has got the uh, next resolution that's on page nine, ten. And I'm not so sure, I think you're just gonna say the number and the title, and that's it.
So for B dash six dash twenty-three thirty-nine sixty-nine is a twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four resolution for membership in the Minnesota State High School League for Denfeld. And then B dash six dash twenty-three thirty-nine seventy is the twenty-three twenty-four resolution for membership in the Minnesota State High School League for East.
Second. Member Lachlan Kemp, seconds the resolution. All those in favor of accepting the Minnesota State High School League membership resolution for Duluth East and Denfeld, say aye?
Aye.
Member Oswald?
Yep.
Aye.
Motion carries six zero. And that's the um, regular resolutions that are part of our um, agenda. And now we move to the um, actually, well, I, I've got the resolution, I just don't have my board agenda right in front of me.
Special resolution.
It's a special resolution. It's number eleven or something on our, our, no, I got that, I just need the-
Thirteen.
Agenda, thirteen.
Yep.
It's in Holly's papers here. So number thirteen on our agenda is um, resolution H R dash six dash twenty-three dash thirty-nine seventy-two, termination of certified probationary non-renewal staff. Whereas during the first three years of consecutive employment, all teachers in the public schools and cities of the first class are deemed to be in a probational period of employment during which period the school board may renew or not renew any teacher's annual contract as the school board shall seek fit. The term teacher includes every person regularly employed as a principal or to be given instruction in a classroom, or to superintend or supervise classroom instruction, or as a placement teacher and visiting teacher. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the school board on independent school district number seven oh nine, St. Louis County, Minnesota, as follows. One, the employment contracts of the following probationary teachers shall not be renewed, and their employment shall terminate at the end of the school day on June ninth, twenty twenty-three, unless another date is indicated below, in which case the employment of the particular teacher shall terminate on that date. Arden, Rachel, Henderson, Robert, Moors, Brian, Steele, Drew. Be it further resolved, the clerk of the school board shall notify such teachers in writing before July first, twenty twenty-three of the termination of their employment. I ask for a second.
Second.
All those in favor of the resolution, say aye.
I have a comment.
Okay.
When I read this, it says during the first three years, all teachers in public schools and cities of the first class. So that's Minneapolis, St. Paul and Duluth. Is that correct? None of the other school districts have to do this?
I believe Rochester is also a city of the first class.
So it's just four cities?
Well, that's the, they're the separate resolution and a separate statute for cities of the first class that mimics all the others.
So, so this is, goes across the whole state?
Yeah.
Yes. Three years of probationary teaching before they grant tenure starting their fourth year if they, they achieve tenure. So, yeah. So I read it all. We've got a second, right?
Yes.
We've had discussion. And all those in favor of resolution, H R dash six dash twenty-three dash thirty-nine seventy-two, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries six zero. Going by our agenda, we are now on number fourteen, which is, are there any questions or anything other? Good teacher always waits for any, any question or not. There, otherwise, we're looking for a motion to adjourn.
So who?
Member eater, a second? Second to adjourn? Member Sandholm, all those in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries six zero. We're adjourned.